Let's call the Village Board meeting to order. This is number 3,113. It's February 22nd, 2016. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Abernathy.
President.
Kim.
Here.
Norton.
Here.
Rikus.
Here.
Russell. Semple.
Thank you. Would those who are able, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Everyone here live and also streaming online, welcome. Thank you for tuning in. Tonight, we have a fairly short agenda, but we have something very important near the beginning. It's a presentation on a healthcare facility located on 45 south of 60. So, we'll get to that in just a few minutes, as well as doing other business, paying the bills, and a few other items as well, certainly. All right. Approval of minutes, please. If I could have a motion, please, to approve the Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes from February 8th, 2016?
Second.
Motion by Rikus, second by Abernathy. Discussion. All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Rikus.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Motion carries. That takes us to the part of the evening where we have public commentary. Would anyone here in the room wish to address the Board? Please raise your hand. We have a hand here. Anyone else? Okay. Sir?
Hello. Ralph Dillon, Post Office Box 908, Mundaline, Illinois. I speak at the beginning of these meetings because it's the only chance I got to speak. I've got three points to talk about. This weekend, I met with Fremont Township officials on non-Mundaline matters, but was able to ask about Mundaline concerns. First one was they had no idea why or legally how Mundaline was avoiding responding to my Freedom of Information requests. I'm still trying to find out what is going on with the grain three-acre truck stop and who is personally responsible. Fremont Township officials also suggested the only ones who might sign off on the sale of unbilled Hawthorne would probably be John Libetto, or even Mayor Lentz, or they may have a designee. Repercussions of signing off. That land is owned by homeowners, West Shore Park. It's illegal conveyance. There is no indemnification or insurance for illegal acts. I'm bringing up today so it cannot be claimed to be an error, as Victor Barrera did before he mysteriously disappeared. Last thing is I want to comment on the long-term care facility at 850 East Highway 45. It's about time. We need to have that in this community. There's a lot of elder people. If somebody got sick in the family, they probably have to chase to Lake Zurich, or Libertyville, or even Lake Forest to take care of their loved one. That's too far. We need that right now. My big question is, how did you come to Mundaline? Did Mundaline call you first, or did you call them first? My concern is whether or not we're wasting money on community development, or we're actually doing something. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We'll close the floor then for public commentary and move on to presentations and awards. We have a few people here today with us. Brad Haber? You want to go ahead and come on up? We have a PowerPoint set up for you and everything. Is that right? Okay.
I think all three of us.
Oh, absolutely. Denise Norman and Debra Hadad.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is DeBora Hadad, and I'm an attorney with the law firm of O'Donnell Hadad in Libertyville, representing the petitioner this evening. We sincerely appreciate the opportunity to present the concept plan for long-term care, memory care, and transitional care for the 11-acre parcel located at 850 East US Highway 45 in Mundaline. In attendance this evening are the following members of the petitioner's team, who will present the concept plan and are prepared to address questions you may have. Brad Haber, who is Principal with Innovative Health, and Denise Norman, President of Transitional Care Management. Thank you.
Thanks, Debra. Thank you for your time this evening. As Debra mentioned, I'm Brad Haber, one of the Principals of Innovative Health. Denise Norman is with Transitional Care Management, our preferred third-party manager, who's really works with us hand-in-hand on all transactions that we work on. Innovative Health, RangeCom, Transitional Care, with the owner, operator, developer of facilities like this across the country. We work on several, a lot of transactions. The Principals have in excess of about, you know, 100-plus years of experience combined. This particular transaction is a replacement facility for the current Winchester House facility that's located in Libertyville. That was a long process, and Transitional Care of Lake County, one of our entities, was awarded that responsibility to, one, currently operate that, and as well as to build a replacement facility within a period of time. Denise will take you through the concept plan of what we are anticipating to build there, as three different levels of care, and then if you've got questions, we obviously can answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, and as was said twice already, my name's Denise Norman. I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to come out and talk through the concept plan. We'll start with the picture of the property. I'm sure, living in Mundaline, you know where that is, on Highway 45. We did want to just touch on the fact that we are looking to enhance the healthcare experience and bring some hospitality into healthcare. We're very excited about offering that to Mundaline and Lake County at large, and you'll see a little bit more about that in some of the design concepts. And you do have the presentation, I understand, from Amanda as well, so. The concept for the replacement facility will be threefold. There'll be three levels of care: long-term care, memory care, and transitional care. So, currently, we have a need for the long-term care placement for those who cannot live at home or live with their families that need that level of care and oversight for day-to-day medications, nursing. And then we also have memory care, which some people refer to as Alzheimer's care, specialized unit with specialized level of training, staffing, and programming that's offered, so that will also be at this new property. And then lastly, will be a transitional care model, which will offer a short-term solution for those of us that may have an illness, an injury, or an accident, unfortunately, and end in the hospital, but are unable to return immediately home. So, this will give an option for them to come short-term, receive some therapy, some nursing care, and then get back home or get back to a lesser level of care. It might be independent living, assisted living, or such. We talked through a little bit about why Mundaline, the location, proximity to providers and referral sources, looking at the management team with knowledge, and future expansion site. So, it's a nice piece of property. It provides us some nice opportunities, so we're looking forward to that site. Benefits to the community: we'll be transferring over jobs, so current staff working with us at Winchester House will be able to retain those jobs, hopefully offer some other positions there as well, bringing economy to Mundaline. We have a lot of people that need to shop and buy gas and groceries and food (laugh) we all like to eat. So, that's something else that we bring to the community as well, as well as the tax base. We've got some site photos there again, although the snow has gone now, so the photos would look a little bit different, but that gives you an idea of the site. This is just some workup concepts of potential elevations that would, again, just in the concept phase, but just to give you an idea of what the building would look like from the outside. And the site plan, which will, when you look at the site plan, you can see kind of the open areas in the middle of the building, so that differentiates those three areas I talked through. So, the custodial care, the skilled nursing, the Alzheimer's dementia unit, and then the transitional care. So, they'd be under one roof, so to speak, and share some of the commonalities, like kitchen, laundry services, some of the crew or the staff lounge areas, but really operate as three separate entities because of the special programming and the special needs, the differentiation between those services. And then these are some project photos that we included. Currently, we have Transitional Care of Arlington Heights that opened three weeks ago, so this gives you an idea of how we like to design and add that element of hospitality. You can see some of the lobby pictures, some of the lounge areas. These photos give you an idea of what some of the suites or guest rooms would look like, some of the nursing stations. The therapy gyms are very large to meet the therapy needs of our guests and residents. This gives you an idea of some of the spa rooms, again, some of the hallways and some of the private rooms that are available. And you're always welcome to come and tour and see it firsthand as well. So, that's the overview that we bring from our experienced team, and I'll turn it back over to Brad, if you have any other questions. We also have a member of the County Board, Lake County Board, Chuck Bartels, that's here that would like to say a few words in support of our project, if that's okay.
I'm Chuck Bartels, County Board District 10, and Mundaline resident on Melody Street. I'm here to represent Aaron Lawler, Chairman of the Lake County Board, and the Board member in whose district that particular parcel happens to lie. You're fortunate to have three County Board members who assist you here in Mundaline, I of course being one of them. Aaron, I wanted you to know for sure about the relationship with this organization that's standing before you now and the County Board. A long story made as short as I can is that over the past decade, the County Board, with a special committee that's been set up of citizens, healthcare professionals, and County Board members, has been working to find a way to transition out of Winchester House if that were the final solution. Originally, the question really was, should the county be in the business and in the Winchester House in particular? As you know, it's an old facility, much in need of maintenance repair, and the number of beds that are being occupied has significantly decreased from that for which the facility was built. The rationale behind it is that an operator with the experience of the folks who are talking to today could provide fire, security, or care. The county is deeply engaged in this process, has a multi-year workout in terms of the financial responsibility for caring for the current patients. All the patients will be accommodated, and to the extent possible, the staff will be accommodated in transitioning, as you heard from their representatives. So, Lake County in particular, Aaron Lawler asked me to step in tonight. He's at a NACO, National Association of Counties. He's at a NACO conference, so I'm happy to be here to represent him and endorse this as much as I can on behalf of the County Board, which passed all the necessary ordinances and financial support for this process as it moves forward. Thank you.
Let's see if we have some questions.
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
But I'd like to direct the question to Chief Gunther. Chief Gunther, what kind of burden will this put on our city services, this type of facility?
Well, these facilities do carry some burden towards public safety in general, fire primarily. They tend to generate a great deal of rescue calls for assistance to the individuals there. There are some law enforcement needs too, but that tends to be on the lower end. It's certainly something that should be discussed moving forward in terms of that impact that these facilities bring. I think that the larger issue, though, is when you look at the compounding of facilities like this, this is, you know, probably a great use for that area and something that we desperately need, but when you place that with the Del Webb development, which again has a very similar age group and some similar needs, and then compound that out into the future with other facilities that may want to come in that are of like business plan that can be straining on public safety in general. So, it's something that should be at least considered moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr.
Okay. Anyone else? You know, I think it looks great. I mean, the design and everything looks wonderful. It's a service we definitely need here. Just as a flyover overview, variances, would it have to come through the plan of zoning? Are there variances that will have to be addressed?
We haven't gotten that far into the review process yet. Definitely a rezoning and likely a special use permit at minimum, and then potentially subdivision, and there could be variances. We just, we don't have all the details yet. I haven't done a plan review.
Okay. But as an overview, I certainly like it. It looks great. I think it's a great, I think we, you know, I think we'll have to discuss what we just heard about. What's that? Trustee Kim, you okay?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that this was only the driving range property, and it did include the tile store next to it, correct?
No, as much as we'd like it to, it's not.
All right. Same sentiment. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Great. I think we have a consensus.
I'm good with it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Looks great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for presenting that to us. Wonderful. Okay. There are no public hearings this evening. That takes us to my report. Just as a, there's no motions under my report, just a few things to discuss, though. First, one week from tonight at 6:30 at the Doubletree, we're going to have a committee of the whole economic summit at the Doubletree with the Plan and Zoning Commission, the EDC Economic Development, as well as the Village Board. And there's going to, we'll also have the Village staff, and we would really like as many members of the public to come and participate, and we'll do a presentation, and then we're going to have questions and answers from the Commissioners and the Board, and then we'll go to the public and freedom, we'll have everyone there for you. Any question you ever thought of asking, we're going to have all the resources available to get answered as best we can. And so, please let's, if you can make it, that'd be wonderful, if you could attend. I wanted to bring up a topic that just came up this week. This last week, one of our state representatives, Carol Sente, introduced in Springfield, House Bill 6008, and it's in response to an incident that happened in our town earlier last year. And basically, what happened is, is that there was a resident in the county that was target shooting with a firearm and missed the target, and the bullet went and hit a home in the village limits. And so, after a bit of research, Representative Sente submitted this bill, presented this bill, and it's been, has a little bit of buzz on social media, so that's why I wanted to bring it up now. It had some language that included some hunting, and I didn't go over too well with some folks, and so what we're doing is changing the language. She's consulting with various parties, the NRA and so forth, to try and solve the issue that we have in a way that can garner the support for this thing to pass. And so, Chief, do you want to talk about the incident at all? If we can just maybe elucidate a little bit more. I know the Board received an email back then, but we're bringing it up now. It's, I know there were more than one incident, if I'm not certain, over the span of years.
Yeah. I think that's the only part that I would kind of emphasize, is the severity of this, these incidents. There were three separate victims, if you will, and three separate homes which the rounds went through, through fronts of the home, through interior walls, and then exiting the rear of the home. Thank God, nobody was injured, but those are the things that we want to prevent, and that's why we're putting forth some legislation to try to prevent that from happening in the future, because our counties in this area are becoming so populated that, you know, we can't be doing those things like we might have been able to do in Boone County or DeKalb County, where there's a little bit more space, if you will. So, it's important that we do that for the safety of our community and residents.
Any questions by the trustees? I wanted to just introduce that, and if anyone had questions, it's House Bill 6008. We can watch it as it moves forward and as it makes changes and everything, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just to confirm, you said, you know, it was last summer, and I'm having trouble recalling, but it was three separate homes, you said?
Yeah. The first incident was in May of 15, and then there were two subsequent incidents on the same day with victims in homes that were next to each other in October, September, October.
So, it was a subdivision.
Same subdivision, yes, and same area.
And it wasn't, I mean, judging by the way you had said it, it was rifle rounds, right? Not like a shotgun or?
No, that's correct. It was a rifle round.
The way you went through. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. That does it for my report. Let's move on to, let's see, trustee reports. Public Works Committee, trustee Russell isn't present, so trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually did not know that trustee Russell wouldn't be here, so let me pull up the motion.
You're the vice chair.
Yeah. It'd be nice if you told me. Kirsten, if you're watching, next time, let me know you're not going to be here. All right. So, what we have on the table here are the street sweeping bids, which went out to bid, and so they have chosen. Right here, this is a one-year contract to, let me read the motion. And just to recap, too, this is the same vendor that we awarded to last year. They had the lowest bid. So, I will just read off the motion then. The motion is to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of the street sweeping contract between the Village of Mundaline and TKG Environmental Services Group, LLC, and to approve subsequent purchase orders for such services.
Motion by Kim.
Second.
Second by Norton. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I actually only received one email of feedback, and, you know, Mr. Boucher, you know this, but the feedback was just something along the lines of, when the street sweeping went through, that they pulled the branch out of the street, right, and put it on their lawn, and then they went, but then they never came back for the branch. I told them that this would happen even if it was a Village street sweeping, but there is communication between like the vendor and the Village, right, to let them know that stuff like that would have been pulled out?
Yes, and we always encourage the residents to contact us if they feel that it's not being done quick enough. We can certainly get out there and do it as quickly as we can.
All right. Thank you. Hey, one email for a whole year, that's great. All right. So.
Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Rikus.
Yes. Motion carries.
All right. And then second, here we have a vehicle purchase for the police department. This is for a prisoner van, which actually was $10,469 under budget. Right here, I'll read. The motion is to adopt a resolution waiving the formal bidding process and accepting the proposal from Mavron Incorporated in Warsaw, Indiana, for a prisoner transport van insert.
Motion by Kim.
I'll second.
Second by Rikus. Discussion.
Just, I don't want to seem like I'm picking on the chief too much, but chief, can you just give us a little bit of an overview? The description in the report we have was fine, but I understand this is a highly, not highly, but a very sophisticated piece of equipment, doesn't it?
Well, sophisticated, I don't know, but specialty in use, absolutely. So, the last time that we purchased this vehicle was in 2003, so it's 12, almost 13 years old, and this is a compartment that goes in the back of a normal van, and it's utilized to transport prisoners, but what's unique about it is it gives us the capability to transport multiple prisoners at one time, and we can segregate those prisoners based on age and/or sex. We're required to keep male and female prisoners separate, as we are juveniles from adults. This vehicle allows us to do that all at one time. So, if we have to transport, you know, from a call back to the station, or from the station up to the county building, et cetera, we can do that with one vehicle in one shot, and that's why this is a special vehicle.
Okay. Do any of the components from the existing vehicle get used on the new vehicle? And if not, what happens to the existing vehicle? Does it go into the pool to be resold?
Well, we would have loved to have the insert of this vehicle utilized again, because it is still in good shape. However, the vehicle makes themselves have changed, and the body styles have changed so much, the insert won't fit into a new vehicle. Actually, the vehicle had fallen apart around the insert, if that makes sense, and so we had to get it all at one time. So, the vehicle itself, if usable, will be sold, as would the insert.
As is?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, trustee Kim.
Chief Gunther, does this alleviate some of, like, when you pull someone over and you need to make an arrest, and there's more than one person, you need multiple squad cars because you can only put one in the back of each? So, would this alleviate that by just having this come?
Yes. That's the idea. There's many times that we have a need to transport more than one or even two people, and as I said, those individual circumstances, male, female, and sometimes we have 16-year-olds mixed with 18-year-olds, et cetera. This gives us the ability to have, like you say, one vehicle do that transport for up to 10 individuals at one time, and again, keeps those cars back out on the street doing what they need to do.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim.
Yes.
Rikus.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I think that is it.
Okay. Moving on to Finance Committee. Trustee Semple is not here this evening. That takes us to trustee Abernathy, the vice chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a couple of things this evening. Okay. We do have a couple of things. We have, first, we have the nine-month financial report, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the nine-month financial report.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by Norton. Discussion.
I just want to say, ours, for anyone that doesn't know, our year runs on a May 1 to April 30th, so that's why we're at nine months now. We don't run on a calendar year. We run on a different year, so that's why we are, and it looks like we're doing okay. Yep. So.
Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Need a second on that?
I'll second it.
Was it? Okay. Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. Abernathy.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Rikus.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and then I have a motion to approve the payments of bills as indicated in the governing body report for the period between February 9th, 2016, and ending February 22nd, 2016, in the amount of $539,369.20.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Rikus.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Sorry, that's all I, yeah, that's all I have for this evening.
Very good. That takes us to Public Safety Committee. Trustee Rikus.
I don't have any report or any resolutions, Mayor, and I promise you, this will be the last time, Chief Gunther, that I call upon you, just to see if there's any, anything you'd like to share with us in terms of activities and events.
I'm going to hold you to that, just so you know. No, I would just like to say that street scenes was a success. We had no significant incidents the past weekend, so things went well. That's it from the police.
Okay. Chief Yoder, may I call upon you for the same information?
Nothing to report at this time. I think we only had two rescue calls at street scenes, but nothing of any consequence, just normal activity.
Thank you very much. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, Community and Economic Development Committee, trustee Abernathy.
Well, thank you. I have a couple of things this evening. First, I have AERC auto repair. I have a motion to pass an ordinance repealing ordinance number 14-01-05, granting a conditional use variation to allow car washing and detailing to be conducted at 1270 Townline Road, Mundaline, Illinois.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, trustee Kim.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, upon reading this packet, that there wasn't bodywork prior, but now there will be. That's correct. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Ricas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and next, for Fairhaven Crossings at 407 East Holly Street, I have a motion to authorize the village administrator to sign a consent to collateral assignment of the TIF note and an IFF loan agree, agreement letter in final forms approved by the village attorney.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by trustee Kim. Discussion. Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Ricas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and I, again, now, there's no new businesses this week. Thank you, Chief Gunther, for reporting on street scenes. We got it. It was a great event. Numbers were up, I believe, over last year. I know the last time I looked, they were. And it was a good event held by many, many of us were there, and we had fun. March 5th, we have coffee with the mayor, and I will be joining Mayor Lentz.
You will.
At Taste of Paris, so please come and join us if you have any questions, especially after the February 29th is the meeting, what are we calling this? The economic summit of Mundaline?
Community of the Ball Economic Summit.
I think I saw it in the paper noted as the economic summit. So our own Mayor Lentz will be having an economic summit, so that'll be great. So if you have questions after that, please come to March 5th, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Next up, Communication and Marketing Committee, trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of items and no motions. On the topic of the economic summit, which has already been mentioned twice, but, you know, just a reminder that our residents, you know, should come to it to hear all the positive, good news. You truly are our front lines in terms of our reputation as a village and in terms of bringing in new businesses. From a marketing standpoint, you are our boots on the ground to spread the good news. So aside from that, we have a couple of positive points here. We had 29 Village of Mundaline employees and family members volunteer to pack food at Feed My Starving Children. That was great. They packed 118 boxes, and that was enough to feed 69 kids for a year. One item, all right, you already got the coffee with the mayor, one that I found actually on social media today, which is great news, is that Mundaline placed in the top 100 public high schools in Illinois out of 1,188. So congratulations, D120, and hashtag Mundy Pride. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, trustee Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no motions to make tonight. Could you shut that off? It's just feedback, and do you hear that? Sorry. Leave it on. I asked Mr. Lundberg to come tonight. You might remember him. He spoke last week, or two weeks ago, about the fiber optic internet, and I know that, Mr. Mayor, you and I had a few words about the potential of an exploratory committee. So I'd like to, I guess, I don't know the exact protocol, but formally request something to that extent to look into that and to see what we can do moving forward, and to just take advantage of, you know, the unique opportunity that we find ourselves in. So if we could, you know, discuss that, look forward to getting that on the agenda for in two weeks, and hopefully move forward. Unless anybody would be opposed to that, I think it would be in our best interest.
We'll just have to check on the, if the availability of that report. I told you there was an internal report being done, so we'll check and see what the progress is on that.
Sure.
If we can in two weeks, great, but we'll keep you apprised.
Okay.
As to where we're at on that.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and that will conclude my report.
Okay. Any other reports, comments, questions, concerns by the trustees? Nope. We have one omnibus vote item. Sounds silly. Does anyone wish to remove it?
No, get rid of that, George.
All right, then, can I have a motion, please, to pass the omnibus vote list, item number one?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ricas, second by Norton. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ricas?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries. That takes us to Village Staff Reports, Village Administrator, Mr. Labato.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one item under my report tonight, but I would ask for a motion to remove this from the agenda, not actually pass the ordinance. We took a little bit closer look at the ordinance today, and we'd like to add a little bit more detail. This is the ordinance that would adopt, officially adopt the logo and the brand promise, and I think we'd like to add a little bit more detail into it about color. There are specific colored numbers, and so we thought it'd be useful to have all that in the same ordinance, and so instead of trying to amend it on its face at the meeting, I just thought we could pull it from the agenda.